Would those be considered, I hate to ask this question, would those be considered substantial changes? Are we, I mean, are we bound that we can't bring those? We're in a time now where we need to make game time decisions. And so I know you're my attorney and you're going to advise me. But at what point can I say, thank you for your advice, but I'm, I'm going to make these decisions for the good of our community? And then you get to defend me if we're sued.
At no point will I advise you to not follow the law.
And I understand that. You will, you will give me the advice. And we as a council can decide if we, if we feel this substantive amendment, maybe we don't feel it is, and so we make those changes. I don't know. I don't want to get into that shenanigans today because it's been certainly a difficult point for us to get to. The other, the other things, I've gotten a handful of whistleblower emails too of companies and, and did early on. Many of them were having large parties and kind of calling them. I had somebody send me an email saying their neighbor was having a COVID party, which is really ridiculous. But I picked up the phone, I called him. And I know, Mayor, you've done the same thing as well as a lot of us have of saying, hey, what can we do to impact this? How can we work together in making sure that your employees feel safe? And that we're really making sure the community is also safe as these people leave? Not to be a little cliche, I was watching the Today Show this morning and I saw a really great story on one city that was using their, they're using police, which I don't know if that's the best thing. But we have a lot of city employees that were trying to repurpose too, that need some jobs and things to do, and we're paying them. But can we use them to do education? We don't necessarily want them out in the public and congregating. But this, this city, what they were doing is they were handing out masks to people that were walking into big box retailers, saying, when you go in, here's a mask. And people were extremely grateful for that. Can we do that as a city to be a community partner in some of this? Partnered with making calls and really just saying, okay, guys, we need that extra 10%. Be a good neighbor. What can we do to get that extra 10%? Because I'm confident that this city will react based on our leadership. I really do. If we cool, calm, collected, ask everyone to say, look, the goal is to just not overwhelm those hospitals as we get closer to that curve. What can we do to make sure that we're doing that? And, and seeing those results. We've heard yesterday with the projections coming out of the governor's office that that, that curve was, for the state, I will say, not for the city, is cut in half. The, the, the projection is, is more of a mound. And so that's great news statewide. We're seeing a higher peak projection here, probably because of our population and just higher density. But what can we do as a city for that to making sure we're moving that needle just a little bit more to ensure the hospitals don't have to operate at capacity?
Councilmember Neitz.
Let's, let's go to the phone and Counselor Breckie.
Thank you. Since we're kind of in a, in a green light thinking mode, in a collaborative mode, what I would kind of toss out, there's a couple ideas. You know, one thing would be, again, I think that really the momentum from discussing this and the people's concern about us adopting it has really raised the awareness that if we just really work together with our community, just like you did with the tornado mayor, I think they'll come through for us. If we tell them we need 10%, and we need them to just go out when it's essential. And then if we were to consider passing a resolution with a list, a list of strong recommendations that really we could collaborate on, the best list would come from you and Jill Franken, you know, from the EOC. Here's the things that we think would really make that difference. Put those, you know, on the resolution. And then perhaps consider an emergency appropriation to fund a, you know, a, an advertising campaign, utilizing PSAs and just advertising capacity to just, you know, really blitz, saturate, you know, our TV stations, you know, for just a short period and just tell the public what we need them to do. Tell them what we want them to do. And whether it be a combination of paid for and PSA's. And even when you're doing your press conferences, you know, just recite the list over and over and over again and watch the figures and see if it works.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Counselors Staley, and then I'm going to check the phones again.
Well, and, you know, in this discussion that we, this intense discussion since Tuesday, I, we did have this, and I'm actually calling it the, the gas, the gasoline ordinance. Well, because it is, it's like, you know, you're going to start the, the gas stove to cook something, and then you just pour a bunch of gasoline on it. And that's really what is, what happened with our community with this thing. And I kind of was, I was of the mindset to take that ordinance and put it on the back burner and defer it and say to the, say to the public, hey, we've got to work on this or this thing's going to come back again. I mean, I know nobody wanted that threat hanging over their head. But especially Mr. Mayor, when you're saying that you're having conversations with, with the 10 largest companies in our city, and there seems to be kind of a question as to how these practices within their employees are being implemented. Counselor Neitz, were you going to say that your idea about the hotline?
Well, I, I don't know that I can since I'm now holding the gavel, but.
Well, then if I, if you don't, Counselor Neitz had an idea about having an employee hotline where they would somehow be connected to an entity that they could report that there's a problem, and then it would be followed up on. If the businesses knew that they were, they were going to have some kind of oversight, that might help take the numbers down as well, just to make sure that we're, we're all playing by the most intense efforts possible for the 10%. So my two cents on that.
Thank you. I'm going to go back to the phones. Counselor Kylie or Sale, if you're still there, do you have any comments or questions?
Yes, this is Counselor Kurt Sale. To the previous question for Counselor Staley, that entity is existing. It's called the South Dakota Department of Labor that regulates employment and labor situations. That's all I have. Thank you.
Counselor Neitz.
Yes, Counselor Breckie.
Just one more thing that we, we could consider doing. And I have discussed this with the mayor before, and at that time it wasn't, you know, a path we want to go down, but it's a path we can consider here as we have this discussion. You know, what we could do, you know, is adopt the ordinance, but delay the implementation date and put a sunset clause on the ordinance. So the ordinance would sunset in two or three weeks. And the delayed implementation would be triggered by a recommendation to execute the ordinance by the Board of Health, and then the mayor could execute it by executive order. And so that would, you know, so that would allow us to do something today that if, if, if these volunteer efforts don't work and we see the hospital, you know, seriously needing it, we wouldn't have to go through the delays. But, you know, absent the mayor actually implementing it, executing it through the, through the recommendation of the health board, it would just sunset and go away. And that could be, you know, make it happen like in two weeks or three weeks. So it's just something to think about, you know, that would just be hanging out there. And we, and I, I just thought about having it be triggered by the, you know, by the health board. But it also could, could be triggered, you know, based on a resolution by the council. We could also say, you know, if, if, if people felt more comfortable, you know, having both entities, you know, say, okay, it's time we have to do this. So just another sort of procedural way that we could kind of leave our options open if things go south. Because we've talked about the models and how they might be left. They could also be wrong on the other side, and they could be more too.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go to Counselor Erickson.
Thank you. I just want to comment on, Counselor Breckie, thank you for thinking outside the box and trying to come up with other ways. For me, I will not support that in any way, shape, or form. The uncertainty for businesses is just too large. And I'm also not interested in taking any authority away from this council. That's just where I stand on that. Thank you.
Counselor Staley.
So for the, for the city attorney, this is, this is the question. Let's say that something, that it totally spikes out of control. And we've got this huge amount of death happening, and it's an emergency situation. And we need, we're, at that point, we say, we're going to have to take action. How, how was, how does that look? How quickly could that happen?
Well, I'm going to give you a legal answer, Counselor Staley. If I was in court, and I, and I don't mean this in a bad way, but I would say objection calls for speculation. There is a lot of, in a hypothetical, it's hard to advise because, you know, there are a lot of pieces to that that I, you know, I mean, if you're talking about procedurally what we would do.
Well, if it, could you, I mean, is there something in place where you could have, you'd have to have an ordinance that would be applicable immediately?
Right. I mean, the, the same rules of procedure that we're functioning under now would also apply then. You know, because there's, you know, the clear body of authority regarding first and second readings. The mayor, under his declaration of emergency, has the ability to call a special meeting, not unlike this one, to get something in the hopper. But we'd still go through that first and second reading process. So, I mean, at the, at the city level, I mean, you talk about resolutions. That's, that's got a little different timeliness component to it. But wouldn't, again, be the force of an ordinance. It would be a resolution. So, I mean, it's a good question as far as if things get really urgent. But, you know, the, the law applies the same from a procedural point of view.
Thank you.
Counselor Starr.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I, to follow up a little bit on Counselor Staley's comments, I think as far as I can tell, we're it. We're in the middle of the pandemic. It's starting to spike. We've done everything that we can do as a council if we pass this, or if we move forward past this time. When you look at the modeling dates and things, we, we've put everything into place that we're going to be able to do in a timeline that's effective to make a difference. We can try to do PSAs. We can try to do all of the other things. We're past it now. You know, by leaving, giving up this week and, and punting basically on Tuesday and, and asking for niceties from our community and, and expecting people to do what they're going to do, we're not going to do anything significant that gets us from that 25% to 35% right now. We can, we can argue about the model and whether we'll see the modeling. But with the data we have, by not acting now and being decisive, we're basically punting it. And I think our residents of our community told us that's what they want us to do. At least half of them that have contacted me have said, hey, we're, we're individuals. We'll be, we'll do our best. We want to move on. We're not getting a, a demand from the public to tell us that we need to do more. And I think we're missing an opportunity. And I think when we look back, we're going to be disappointed that we didn't take stronger action. But at this point, there isn't anything that we can do that's going to move this spike that isn't already in place. There are things, again, that we can do in emergency situations and stuff. But from the preventative side of it, this is our window of opportunity. And like I said, the, the emails and the people that have reached out to me and a majority have told us they don't want us to do anymore. That this is as far as, that they're willing for us to go. I'm disappointed by that, but I think that's the reality of where we're at. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Counselor Kylie on the phone.
Thank you. While I'm not certain that we have necessarily missed our window of opportunity yet, but I know that I have certainly talked about that in the past, that we do want to be proactive versus reactive. Because if you're reactive and you wait until you hit that exponential growth point, then you are fighting a losing battle. I, I think the next several days will still tell us quite a bit. I'm encouraged with what has taken place just in the last two, that the growth of infections, while it's still growing, it's not growing at the rate that it was two days ago. So let's see what is going to happen over the course of the next several days and, and even beyond the Tuesday meeting. But I do just want to caution everybody, the public, that this does not in any way, shape, or form indicate that we should take our foot off the gas. We have to continue to self-monitor and social distance to do our, our part. So we just need to be, continue to be vigilant. And we need to continue to watch the data as it comes in. And the data includes not only the infection rate, but the hospitalization rate too. Because the hospitalization rate obviously follows the infection rate. We can't just look at the infections today because as soon as you're, it's determined that you are positive, it's often many days before you go actually into the, into the hospital. So I just want to caution everybody that we need to be vigilant. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, yes, Director Franken.
I just really want to make a couple of comments. One is I used the word optimistic earlier in the presentation when we were talking about the data. And I want to be really careful to have you understand that my optimism is that I feel at least much better about where we are headed as a community in terms of our infections, our rate of hospitalization, et cetera. I was far, far more concerned, you know, a week ago. And so when we started looking collaboratively and got our GIS folks involved, I started feeling at least a sense that we are seeing a pathway where we've got a better match of what the capacity is in Minnehaha and Lincoln County, or our capacity of our health systems to meet the demand. But I also want to tell you, and I feel like I have to, that I think we need to do, we do need to do a little more than what we're currently doing. I think we need to add to the no lingering ordinance some additional measures, some of which Mayor Tanhaken was talking about. I think that's imperative. I do think that that's very necessary for us to, if, to get a little past that 25%. Because I think that 25% right now is a generous perspective on where we're at with our social distancing. And I think we need to do a little bit more in policy to ensure that we can have the resources needed across this time period. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Staley.
Tom, do you have that? Jim David was kind enough to, to pull this up. So this is what, a draft that I have. But again, it would be wonderful if, if the mayor wants to add something to this. Before we get into this, were we talking about people, patrons coming into a business wearing a face mask or the employees wearing a face mask?
Mr. City Attorney, I, I want to, I think he has something he wants to.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't, the, the, this resolution's not on the agenda. So I just want to make sure that.
But I thought, I thought we were talking about where we're going from here.
Yeah, it's, it's discussion in, in questions regarding the ordinance.
A possibility of where we go.
The agenda identifies it as an ordinance. I mean, if you had some things to talk about, but I don't want to present a resolution to the community that hasn't been noticed for discussion, so.
What if we just call it some suggestions? Well, because the ma, well, I mean, because the mayor already said a suggestion that he already referenced the resolution.
Yeah.
Well, he was referencing, okay, let me, let me back up. So let me say this isn't a resolution. Maybe, I'm just going to talk about this being an amendment, which apparently we can't do.
You can just, I, I think you can discuss the, the substance. I just don't want any confusion that there's a resolution being discussed this afternoon. That's not part of the agenda. So if you're talking about, if it's related to the ordinance and adjusting from the ordinance.
Well, I, I would like, well, this is all kind of in the air. I mean, this could be an amendment then.
Okay, possibly.
This will be an, well, we, we got to find a way to get it to where it needs to go next week.
And I think there, I think there are options for that. I just don't want to stray outside of what's been noticed, the, the public.
Okay, I'll stay in the box. Okay, so anyway, we're over, something I was thinking is a nice statement to make to the public is whereas the city council and the mayor deeply appreciate our citizens as essential, whereas the city council and the mayor deeply appreciate the efforts that our citizens have put forth to mitigate, got to put, separate those two words, forth to mitigate the spread of COVID-19, whereas the city council and the mayor deeply appreciate the sacrifice that our employees are making to keep our citizens serviced and safe. Whereas the city council and the mayor recognize the constitutional rights of every citizen. Whereas the city council and the mayor want to keep all patrons and employees safe. Whereas on March 11th, 2020, the World Health Organization declared COVID-19 a pandemic. And whereas on March 12th, 2020, the mayor issued Executive Order Number 20218 declaring an emergency to address the noble coronavirus, COVID-19. And whereas on March 13th, 2020, the governor declared an emergency in the state of South Dakota in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas on March 23rd, 2020, the governor issued Executive Order 2020-08 setting forth guidelines and recommendations regarding personal, business, and healthcare precautions to be taken in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas on March 24th, 2020, the governor announced that she is recommending that all K through 12 schools in South Dakota remain closed until May 1st, 2020. And whereas on March 24th, 2020, the Sioux Falls School District has closed all K through 12 schools through May 1st, 2020. And whereas of 12 o'clock noon on April 16th, 2020, there are 1,065 confirmed cases of COVID-19 within Minnehaha County. And, okay, well, we got a bunch of more things. These are, these are just repeated things. Let's go down to now therefore be resolved that the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota. And we could talk about stay at home. That's what the mayor already, these are all things the mayor had talked about, which are very good. But this would bring the council into the recommendations. And then Jim, let's go down to where does it talk about the 20%? Businesses. Business, the last section down there. So everything else here is, I believe, what the mayor had said. But Section 5 businesses not bound by the limitation of 10 or fewer patrons as originally set forth in ordinance number 2029 should whenever possible limit their patron and employee occupancy to no more than 20% of their posted occupancy and institute a safe social distancing strategy for employees and customers outside of their place of business waiting to enter. Now, on there, we could absolutely, if you, we wanted to say, I mean, just to brainstorming, what things are going to be beneficial? That employees shall wear face masks. Employees shall be having their temperature taken, if that wants to be in there or not. I don't even know how this is going to look moving, how this gets implemented. But I will say, as far as the face mask thing, I, I don't think it would, I would not want to mandate that citizens have to have a face mask to go into a business. Because some people won't have access to that. Maybe some people don't feel the need. That would be problematic for me.
It sounds like I maybe have a little latitude, even though I'm holding the gavel. So I, I do want to ask if, this is something that we have been batting around overnight. Is there any input that the administration would have? Perhaps a health director on whether or not, we're, we're talking about things that would maybe get us a little bit more, a little bit more bang for the buck? If our thought about the 20% of posted occupancy applying to both employees and customers? Because right now it only applies to patrons in the, in the, in the current proclamation. Would that, has that been thought about? Has anybody batted that idea around if it would help? Because we, it's just something that we've, we've thought about, so.
And remembering, if we did do this, it'd be, it would be non-binding. It's more of a strong suggestion. So we can't, there's no enforcement piece to it.
Yes. Yeah, and the word should is there. So yes, it's a strong suggestion. Yeah. And without knowing how, I mean, I have an email from, from FIRE that I haven't even read yet that talks about occupancy and how they calculate that, you know, whether that would change anything anywhere. And I don't know, so.
You know, and we've talked about our no lingering ordinance right now. You know, businesses are expected that if they are operating, and they are of those businesses that need to maintain 10 or fewer customers in their, in their business, that we haven't regulated how many employees are there. But we have said they should be maintaining social distancing practices and good hygiene practices. We've got a list of things in the ordinance that asks them to do. I would say it would probably be my recommendation that we probably cop, you know, mirror that and do the, and do something that would be 20% for their, their customers in those particular businesses. And then put in the statements like the no lingering ordinance around the, what they do for their employees. Similar to the other, what's already in the no lingering. Does that make sense? So you would treat these businesses' employees the same as you would in the no lingering ordinance, how they're treating the employees, which is, we're requiring, or asking them to maintain good social distancing practices and good hygiene practices to mitigate the spread within their employee pool. But we aren't telling them how many employees they can have at, say, a restaurant does carry out. If it, if it's a large enough restaurant with enough carryout and delivery, or delivery and or drive-through, whatever, that they have more than 10 employees, we're not telling them to have no more than 10 employees. And I would say the same would be true for this one. But we are asking them to maintain good social distancing. I personally would be, I think it'd be something we could consider this as actually being, you know, something that could be in the no lingering ordinance that we put some, instead of just in a resolution. We could think through that and see what that would look like.
The, the problem with that is that then it turns into, well, unless, I see our attorney is gone. But then, then it would make it, it would put another week, well, we'd either have to have a special meeting to approve it, or, or it goes to May.
Well, you could start, if you're asking me a question, if that's all right. You could start possibly with a resolution and then go forward with the ordinance to mirror that down, you know, at the next meeting.
That's excellent, that's what I was thinking. Well, the other thing is that we're talking about Lewis Drugs. Some of the businesses are doing a great job, like are, some grocery stores are one-way thing. I mean, so do we want to somehow put that in, well, into a resolution for sure? Because that's a suggestion. But just giving direction to those places that would help. Like, I know Walmart is kind of taking you in one at a time. They're, they're not letting too many people in at once, I think. Yeah. That, that would certainly, isn't that, because to me, part of the problem is when you have these big, like, the mayor said, you got these big groups of people together. How can, how can we legislate that? You, you're right in time. We're talking about, we're talking about how we can, Jill just said that we.
Uh-oh.
Jill.
Well, no, we're talking up, well, we're talking about how we, how we take this, this, a resolution wording and put it into the ordinance, the lingering ordinance. And then that's a time issue, isn't it?
I'll, I'll take the, I'll take the heat on this one. I had said, I had said perhaps if there were, like, for example, Section 5 here in this document that's before us, if that was something that could, that we felt could be in the no lingering ordinance, for example, could a resolution be passed with these are shoulds? And then at the same time, you're actually putting forward a first reading of an ordinance. So then the next week, that ordinance is passed. So at least you have a resolution stating the things that you want to put into a future ordinance, which would be then first, I.
Yeah, I mean, the, what's commonly colloquially been referred to as the no lingering ordinance will be presented on Tuesday. If you wanted to bring a separate ordinance for first reading on Tuesday, whatever that content may be, that could be presented. If in the meantime, you wanted to put a resolution together to be presented, you know, with timely notice for the agenda for this coming Tuesday, you could do that as well.
Were you suggesting you would take the no linger ordinance and you'd basically put it in a resolution which we could adopt? And then you would amend the no linger and then defer for?
No, and I know, I'm sorry to be, if I'm confusing. We have the no lingering ordinance. If we wanted to add some things to that, then it sounds as if that would need to be a first reading if it was substantive. So I'm just suggesting if we add those things, we require masks in certain situations. We require maybe things such as that Section 5, for example, those types of things. That could be then a first reading of a, of an ordinance. could be then a first reading of a, of an ordinance. But at the same time, if you wanted to, you could resolve and have a resolution that says, we want you to start doing that now, as of Tuesday next week, but we're, and so we're going to also then make sure we adopt that as ordinance the following week.
I follow. I'm going to go to Counselor Erickson in a second, but I do want to ask, the one thing I do, the one, we did have the word "should" in here, and that, and that was, I'll just say for me personally, the one thing I do worry about is, I don't know how every business operates and what the ratios of people and stuff, so my concern was getting in a bind where I've done something where there's a very legitimate reason somebody needs 24% of the occupancy of employees, and they're still doing the right things and distancing, and now I've messed up their operations. So we got to be really careful about any of this stuff.
And I think you would want to, I'm sorry, you maybe weren't asking me a question there.
Oh, no, I'm looking for your input. Yes, please.
I think you'd probably want to look at, again, the, those SISA businesses and make sure that, you know, you're speaking to those differently than those. We've, we've got enclosed retail spaces, but we, but there are other types of retail, et cetera, that you might want to then put that 20% towards.
Okay.
Make a difference. I think everything that we would want to do would really actually move the needle instead of just putting some kind of window dressing on what we're trying to accomplish.
Exactly. I don't want to do something that just feels good, but doesn't actually move the needle.
Well, and just on that, like, like, right now Menards, Jill, if you want, Menards doesn't have any limit, right? I mean, that, they can be, it can be packed to the gills. So we're not even, that's, these are things that...
Yeah, that's correct. And, but we've had, we, you, several of you have said, you know, we've had some really good compliance voluntarily to really try and mitigate. The issue is, we don't have it in law, we don't have it in ordinance, and so are there ways that we could do that, that can just ensure that all businesses that maybe aren't yet could also comply with those particular requirements?
And still stay in business.
And still stay in business, yeah.
Counselor Erickson.
Okay, so I want to kind of piggyback on how we've been talking about the businesses, and I know we don't want to get in the business of regulating businesses, so to speak, and that's, I know our attorney has been very strong on that, we don't want to do that. So we can, we can say a lot of "shoulds", but I want us to be very careful that, in my opinion, government is not the answer for mandating heavy things, but we want to give them the tools to making sure that if they make these changes, they will see some benefit if they're so inclined. And so I say that carefully. One of the things that we've seen, too, is a lot of the businesses have had to shut their hours, and so now we've taken all these customers that visit in a 24-hour period, and we've condensed them to, I don't even know what some of the grocery stores go to, but maybe say 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM, 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, or something like that. And so I think that is also a strain on having more people in there, and so it would be wonderful if some of them could go back to 24 hours, but I know we can't mandate with that. The other question I would have, and maybe for on Tuesday night, Stacy, and maybe you know off the top of your head, is, you know, we're talking about the lingering ordinance that we have in place, but we also have a loitering ordinance in place, too. Does any of that play into what we're already doing with, you can't loiter on certain properties and things like that? Is there a way that we can softly educate people? Because that does currently exist in loitering. Not to go down a whole different bunny trail, but this is our time to answer questions, and so I apologize if the night's getting long, but this is a serious conversation to be had.
This is a serious conversation to be had, but this is not the only time we can answer questions.
Right. But it just came to me now. So that's why I say, I throw that to you, and we can have the conversation on Tuesday. I'm not asking, totally putting you on the spot, but just something to consider how those kind of companion each other.
Yeah. I'm going to look to the phone in a second, but I, and I'm going to go to Counselor Staley as well. I, one thing I want to just make sure I mention before it slips my mind, it was brought up earlier, and hopefully I'm staying on topic, is that there was a question about, about hotlines and things like that. I do want to recognize that we actively have Luanne Ford and Jeff Eckoff leading up a team where, when calls are coming in, they are going to the health department, they're going out and they're inspecting, and, and they are doing, they haven't, I don't think they've had to write a single ticket, because I think they're getting compliance, but I did want to recognize that. They are doing that work. So it does exist, and so, but exactly how, what number you call, I'm not clear of, but just so we're on record. Does anybody have any, any comments on the phone before I go to Counselor Staley?
Dale hung up.
Yeah, they may have, oh, go ahead.
He said, nope.
Oh, it was a nope, okay.
Nope, no call back.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to go to Counselor Staley.
No, okay, Counselor Erickson, just to go back to the regulation on businesses, we're already doing that. The lingering ordinance is putting stipulations on a business. We've already passed that, right? So, so I, and I guess I've been thinking, why are we, we can put it on these smaller businesses, 10 or less, but the, the big business gets to have at it whatever they want. Why, why are we doing that?
Good question.
I mean, that just, especially when...
That's not a reflection of what the law says. It references enclosed retail businesses, and the definition are in there. So there isn't a small business component that gets, that has these restrictions, and a large gets to do whatever they want. I would just refer people to the language of the ordinances themselves.
Well, I understand, but we passed an ordinance that's going to dictate how a small business operates, and some of, and, and also...
Again, the delineation there is not small business. It's enclosed retail businesses. It's defined in the ordinance.
How about if I say smaller?
No, because there are enclosed retail businesses of significant size that are also included in that.
Smaller employee base?
No.
Okay, but that also, it seems to me that the things that are, the entities that are having the biggest problem are the bigger ones. We're hearing from the bigger, and whether it's the retirement home, or Wells Fargo, First, First Premier Bank, I mean, it's hitting everybody, but that's within them. So I think it's, it is, it's, it's a prudent thing for us to be looking at ways to help them keep people...
Again, if I hope I can, as chair, I do wonder if, if there is a call center, and maybe they, they have, I mean, do we have any enforcement or any levers right now we can pull? Have you run into anything where you've seen something, but you don't have a lever right now? You know, so...
Well, yeah, for sure. You know, and I'm, again, whistleblower situations, and I'm not going to out people, but there's healthcare, healthcare facilities, none that were represented here, that should know better on practices that they're employing right now, that they should be doing some things very differently. And so it's, it's, it's hard for me, you know, all I can do is say, you shouldn't be doing that, you know, you should know better. And some of that's just going to happen. We're turning this nanny state where it's like, people are tattling to me all the time on businesses, I'm so over it, where people are, you know, outing their employers. At some point, we do have to just rely on the employers to be doing the right thing, but...
Okay, I'm looking for other ideas. I, I will just say for my part, I'm...
It seems like to me, there are a couple simple things. I think people should be getting their temps checked before they go into a large employer. And I think the healthcare organizations, we could set up a task force that could help with that. So any employer could reach out to us and say, hey, we want to do this, can you help us? And we would say yes. And we would find a way to do that. We'd get them the equipment they would need to do that. You know, the temps today, it isn't the thermometer under the tongue for 10 minutes anymore. I mean, you can get the temp like that, and we can set some protocols for them. And so, because again, where's the problem at? The problem is at a facility where there's 100 employees in a 30,000-square-foot warehouse that are working alongside each other all day, and they got a 200-square-foot break room where they're all congregating over lunch. So those are the, those are the situations that will help us in this. So if we feel it's too heavy-handed to say to a business, listen, if your 100 employees are over, we're going to put in ordinance during this time that temperature checks are required at the door, the main entrance of your company. Takes two minutes. If that's infringing on people's rights and they don't want to take it that far, then we're really left with nothing at that point. So if those are the things that are going to, but that's substantial enough that we can't just add that to a no lingering ordinance, because it's, that's a totally different can of worms, and we may have businesses rise up and say, no, we don't want to do that either. So, and I think someone said it, again, this is all blurring together, but the window of efficacy is closing quickly here. I mean, this was kind of a hail mary, you know, with, with what we brought forward this week, not knowing what our data was going to look like and what we've seen in the last 24, 48 hours with some of this. So gospel according to Paul, but that's kind of where we sit today.
Thank you. Other thoughts? It's been a marathon, but it's been really good.
The last thing I'll say, can I take one last thing?
Yes, please.
We could also consider taking the CDC guidelines and simply putting them into ordinance for a period of time. It's not, it's not us making it up, it's like CDC guidelines. The CDC guidelines recommend some of these things I've just said to you all for businesses. So that's a, it's a buck-passing maneuver where we just say, listen, if the CDC is doing this, then businesses should be, be doing this. And again, I don't know what all those are, they're out there, you know, Jill would be able to speak to some of those, so that's another consideration.
So are you, are you proposing that would, that that could be put together on, on Tuesday?
I'm really not proposing anything, because I don't know. I'm just, you know, for, for conversation purposes.
Well, I mean, it's either Tuesday, or we wait until May, whatever that is, I mean...
We have, we have a special meeting for sure, yeah.
Well, if you're, yeah, if somebody's willing to call the special meeting.
Yeah. So that's what we have to work out as a council over the weekend. I think we need to, we need to adjourn this meeting. We got some work to do to figure out if we want to get something like that over the weekend, if we could find some unity to do something like that, or if we're going to be in a position of comfort with just saying, this is where we're at, we've tried to do all we can, and, you know, let's let the chips fall.
Maybe my last statement, I, I'm open to discussions over the weekend. The only thing I, I want to think about and be a little cautious about is that if we come, come up with something and we put it on as new business, we're, even though it's not binding, we're putting in some new regulation really quickly without a lot of notice to the business community. And then once we put it in, and then it's in for the five days, it's going to be kind of hard to potentially vote against it. So I could potentially see just passing the no linger ordinance and come up with something and do a first reading, and do a second reading, so we can have plenty of public input and really deliberately think about it instead of doing something quickly, just food for thought, but we'll talk about it.
You saying instead of a resolution, then?
Yes, potentially. That it'd be just a first reading. You'd have the no linger ordinance and a first reading of potentially something that we come up with. But that's just one of many options. So with that, I'm going to adjourn this meeting. Stay safe and have a good night.
Thank you.